Okay, thank you.
All right. Good morning, everybody. I think we are ready to begin. Welcome to the November twenty twenty-three meeting of the Saint Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president. And we do have a quorum. We have six of our members here out of seven. It's great to see everybody. Why don't we go around and do some introductions? Dorothy, can we start with you and we'll just go around the table?
Board member.
John Walters, board member.
Trustus Setlock, treasurer.
John Johnston, vice president.
Judith Gwen, board member.
Thank you, everybody. Are we good tech-wise? All the mics and things seem to be working? Beautiful. Thank you. All right, we have a lot to do today. We have some important appointments afterward. Some critical ballet needs to be seen, so we're going to keep it moving and grooving today. The first item is approval of the October twenty twenty-three minutes.
I have one edit item Roman numeral six. Motion to accept.
I see. Roman numeral six.
What's the what's the pen and name?
Belinda, do we know who that name should be?
We'll have to go back and review the YouTube footage.
Yes.
We will fix that.
Somebody remembers who did it.
I I can check. I usually do check it and I must have just missed that I had didn't have that on there.
Yeah, we will. We will review the YouTube footage.
Thank you, Judith. Any other discussion items on that? Are we ready to entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the amendment as you described in item six B I to fill in the name of the motion to accept?
Move to accept. As amended.
Thank you, John.
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Great. Thank you. Next, we can move into the monthly expense ledger, the E A Ls for October. Any discussion before we entertain a motion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'll try to do it quickly. Two thirds of the way down, the bill payment for the rap artist. The three hundred dollars, is that his entire payment or deposit or what are we looking at here?
That was the payment for the van wrap, not the mobile library wrap.
Okay. Van wrap. For the design or the rap itself?
Design.
The design, yes.
The van wrap.
Yes.
On second page halfway down, the Minnesota Life Insurance Company. There's a couple of life insurances here, Minnesota Life, Madison Life. What's the difference?
Minnesota Life is our life insurance and Madison Life is our long-term disability insurance.
These are for current employees.
Current full-time staff.
Madison is disability.
Long-term disability.
Could you could you have room to add that on like in front afterwards on each of them? So I don't have to keep.
I usually.
We will. We will do that in the future.
Right there next to it, L T D, long-term disability insurance. I do put it on there each time.
Thank you. And that was all my questions.
I have two on page two. Up at the second one from the top, what is the leasing program there for twenty-two hundred and change?
That's the copiers, I believe.
The FBS leasing?
Yes.
Yes, that's our copy.
That's copiers. We do not own the copy machines. We lease and we find that gives us a better return on our investment.
All right. And two down from that, Deborah Ann McClure presented a program. What was the program?
It was an art program.
You know, artists?
Yes.
Any other questions or items?
I do have on page three. Two thirds of the way down, Schonbauer for five hundred dollars. They're a pretty high-end bunch. We probably could have bought a new podium for less than that.
No, we could. Those podiums cost several thousand dollars because they contain all of the A V equipment.
Okay, so it was wired.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
All right, can we entertain a motion to approve the E A Ls?
So moved.
Anyone care to second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Right. Belinda, your time in the quiz seat is over. Nice job, as always. Okay, next on the agenda is the treasurer's report, but that's not happening today, correct? Right, we'll wait for our next quarterly update. So then we can move on to the Smurla report, John.
Yes, I had to follow up with with Ashley since I was absent during October. One of the things we were looking at, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. That that we were joining the Maryland Public Sector Collaborative to help us comply with the Time to Care Act. I don't know if that was discussed here in October, but
Yes, it was.
Yeah. As I seem to remember that coming up. And we are revisiting the bylaws. And and we may have have that for consideration at our December meeting. We went through our holiday closures for twenty twenty-four. And we had a successful audit completed by DeBlanc, Murphy and Murphy.
Yes, thank you, John.
Welcome.
I know they are a separate bunch from us, but given that we have representation there, will the bylaws revision come back here for a look see?
I see no problem with that. I can I can ask to we can have have those reviewed here.
You would have no say in them, however, that's a separate organization.
That's true, but we have a representative, as we say.
They that board would be responsible for its own bylaws.
Yeah, so thank you, John, for keeping that information flowing in both directions.
You're welcome. I mean, we can just, you know, we can certainly have a look.
Smurla is also looking for a member of the public to be on its board, to be in compliance with the new Maryland law. They need a member who is not a member of the library board of trustees of one of the three counties. So if you know somebody you think would be a good representation of the public at large, you can forward that name to me. I'll send it to Ashley or send it to John, and he can send it to Ashley. Got a couple of candidates in mind.
Yeah, she mentioned that as well.
I would add also that yesterday I attended the Southern Maryland Intellectual Freedom Summit that Smurla hosted. The president of Saint Mary's College of Maryland was invited and she tapped me as her designee, knowing about the work I do as a library with the library, so I got to attend. And at this summit, it was half a day yesterday. It was a really excellent program. There were representatives from library systems throughout the state, as well as academic librarians from the College of Southern Maryland and some other institutions. And was a really good conversation about some of these censorship efforts that are underway in different parts of the country. About legislation that librarians and library advocates are working on right now to go to the General Assembly to enshrine the freedom to read in the laws. And some other related issues. So it was very interesting and the conversations are going to continue. And Ashley is great, the director over there. She's doing a great job.
I'll just add that we had members from the school libraries of the three counties as well. So it it is a concern at all levels of librarianship, academic, public and school.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. All right, Michael, let me turn it over to you for celebrations.
Okay, well, first of all, we will have two presentations today. Everside will be presented by David Yingling and Catherine Prattson from Saint Mary's County, and we'll hear from Asset Strategy as well. Under your new trustee business, you will review the evaluation form for the director and have a discussion of board officers, but then we'll move into celebrations here. And our first one for retirement.
That is for Sue Clifton. Okay. Sue, congratulations. We have nineteen years and it says, thank you for all your hard work and dedication throughout the years. You will be missed. Onto the next chapter. So congratulations on successful completion of nineteen years. Want to say anything? Welcome back there. We we have quite a few things this morning. The first is a our couple of hip hip hoorays. Rosa Nakamoto is one of them, and she couldn't be here today. She is out at Cedar Lane doing outreach programming, but this is to Rosa, your work as a Spanish-speaking community has resulted in new partnerships, new programming and new audiences for the library. Either efforts, the library relationship, this typically underserved community has been strengthened, and the English Conversation Hour you helped create is providing a much-needed resource for new members of the county. Thank you for your outstanding service. And the next is for Andrea McGonigal. Andrea's not here this morning. Okay, great. From Lexington Park, your involvement with the Blue Star family has brought new audiences to the library and strengthened our outreach of the military members of our community. Thank you for your non-traditional marketing, partnering, promotion and community building that have made our start book club the most successful Blue Star partnership in Maryland. And again, thank you for your outstanding service. And we have three work celebrations this morning, anniversary celebrations this morning, and the first is for Sarah Baker. Yeah. Sarah, congratulations on five years.
Thank you.
It looks like any one's the same. The next one is for Kisha, and that's also for five years of service. Kisha, congratulations. And the final one, Jill, is for Jill, twenty years of service, and you're going to have to say something besides, I know you will, so.
Well, it has been same as with Sue. It has been an honor and a privilege to work at the library with all of these excellent people for so long. I think it's a testament to what a great place to work this is, that there are so many of us who receive these longevity awards. That's not common in this day and age for people to stay with one organization that long. So I think that's something that we as an organization be very proud of, that people find their place here and want to stay. So thank you.
In a good way, congratulations, Mrs. Maria Strupina. Brianna has finished her Master of Science in Library and Information, a master's degree in Library and Information Science. So congratulations, Brianna.
Sure. I'll really have to say that when I started my master program, I originally thought my library should be a little step in my library and shift journey, but I love you so much that I did put it down as my specialization. So hopefully I'll be staying here for a while.
And I'll keep moving right into things until we have David and Catherine here. So the next thing to do while we're waiting for that will be to take a look at the FY twenty-four budget. And I've reviewed it. I I really only want to have, I only want to comment on the last page. Everything really seems to be pretty much in order there. Anything that's sort of ahead of time in terms of expenses is not unexpected. In many cases, those things will be front-loaded. So if you have any questions about any of the budget lines, please ask. Otherwise, I do want to point out something on the last page.
Sure. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Page three. Under professional services. Accounting and audit. Is that to the audit from S P C, I think? Is that for last year's audit? Is that a partial payment, a full payment?
Accounting, that's not just one payment. That's accounting and audit covers everything to do with accounting or the audit. The audits payment actually does not is not reflected here yet. I paid it yesterday. So this is through ten thirty-one. It's S and B company that does the audit. But we also pay for the audit of the O P E V by
Bolton.
Bolton, thank you. So that's partially Bolton. That's also just accounting fees that we pay.
So Askey and Askey.
Askey and Askey and other minor fees.
But we haven't paid for the annual financial statement audit yet.
We we did yesterday, but it's not showing up here until next month.
What was that amount?
Ten thousand.
Thank you.
It's up two thousand from last year.
The next page. The top of page four. Other category, the last line is shortages. Just curious what that what that means.
Well, our staff reconciled the cash register every day, and so sometimes they're five cents short or a dollar short.
It's cash. And then page five. The I'm just having trouble understanding the total. The total grand total restricted expenses, which is the total for this page. What's different? So I understand the first column is the original budget. And we're including total donations, grant expenses, and the total grant expense to get to one thirty-seven. What I'm not following is the rest of that row across there.
On page, which page?
Page five.
Page five, grand total restricted expenses. I'm just having trouble following.
The grand total restricted expenses are the grants and the donations.
Right, I had that on the first column, which is our budget. But I'm not following the totals on the other columns. I'm probably not saying why not adding up the same the same way that the first column is.
Which which, I'm sorry.
Well, so grand total restricted expenses include the donations twenty, right, twenty thousand. The Smurla grant fifteen thousand. And the total grant expense one oh two, that gets you to the one thirty-seven, one ninety-eight.
So those are the expenses. We haven't those columns, the the columns above don't add to that. One oh two. It's a different total.
No, the one thirty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
Is the twenty, the fifteen and the one oh two.
No.
No.
The two columns up above is grand total budgeted expenses. Those columns are separate. So your total grand total restricted expenses is actually those what you're looking at above twenty and fifteen, those are what we budgeted, not our actual expenses. Right now, our expenses restricted expenses are expected to be one thirty-seven. I I would have, these are, this is pulling from several places and I'd have to go back and look. I can't. I have to see what it is, but it is correct. Just need to.
Okay, but they do. The total donation's twenty.
So I I think it would be helpful to know what goes into that grand total restricted expenses. If it isn't those donation lines and the grant expenses that Judith is looking at.
I I understand. And I can I can get you that, but I'll need to pull it up and make sure I am looking through this correctly.
It's that one line that that one row across. I don't understand those totals.
So it is, so it is the one oh two is the grant, fifteen is the Smurla grant, and then twenty is the donation. That does equal one thirty-seven, one ninety-eight.
Yeah.
So are you asking about the rest of the lines, nine one oh seven?
The rest of the rest of that row, the nine one oh seven.
Okay, so the
Seven seventy, the
The
the balance, the fifteen thousand.
The nine one oh seven is an adjustment to the grants because we received two other grants after the fiscal year began. So those are adjustments and they show under grants. So this is pulling from the grants page, which is later.
Right.
Spent to date is how much we spent, again, pulled from the grants page, which is the page. Sorry, hold on.
I think it's it's a page ten.
Last pages.
Page ten.
Yeah. Page nine.
Page nine, yes.
So what I've done is these are just totals. The breakout of those grants and donations are on those last pages, nine and ten. So they're pulled back to this total.
Okay, so my question is, if you take spent to date one seven three six and plus zero, the grant expenses. Total grant expenses, seven, 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 zero. Why why is that? Why is that toe on there blank? Why is that not adding up?
I'm still not understanding what you're asking is not adding. I just don't understand. I apologize.
Okay.
Um, so are you looking at? Would are we still on page five?
Page five, yeah.
The grand total restricted expenses? That that final line is what you are asking, what they're not, because I'm just, that's just restricted expenses. I haven't brought it down. If I don't need those numbers there. Because they're in the other pages.
Other other budget lines that you wish to ask about?
I I have one. You mentioned there's two thousand dollar cost increase for S and B. Okay, when was the last time we went out and, you know, fished for replacements based on cost as well as qualifications?
Well, we always go with the firm chosen by the county. They include us in their R F P. And we get a substantially better rate that way. So it's been, however, three years now, and the county is probably due to do another R F P, but they are very graciously including us in their in for search for the next accountant. And we will see if, you know, this is the year they'll do one, but maybe about every three years.
So we're bundled on that one. We're bundled with them.
With the county.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah.
Also, John, we expect those prices to go up. We we know Asset Strategy increased our prices by eight thousand dollars. So it's not a surprise to have an increase there.
Can anybody figure out what that percentage was from where we were? Can anybody figure out what that percentage was from where we were?
Well, we were paying frankly and abnormally low rate previously. It was only two thousand dollars a year. So that was a large increase, but um. Basically, um, they redid their contract. But when we looked at competitors. They were going to be by far the most sort of um effective for us in terms of cost. The firm the county went with was going to cost about forty thousand a year for us.
Yeah, I knew that they were very expensive. Yeah.
You know, um, and we've only just renewed the contract last year, so. Um, we'll be hearing from asset strategy later, but they have been the most cost effective that we've been able to find so far.
Well, since we're not bundled and as a fiduciary over there on that account, I get a little nervous about a four hundred percent increase. When Mr. Wing kind of beat us over the head about paying attention to what the uh various plans cost us. So.
Well, I certainly understand that, but that's already been approved this year, and I'm not expecting that kind of a cost increase coming up. If, if we were to see a similar cost increase so that they became as expensive as, say, the firm the county now uses, we'd have to shop around.
Okay.
I do want to point out to you on the last page, the very last number on the last page, total fund balance. I think this is a pretty accurate number for what the fund balance is. It's the MLGIP account. Minus the restricted expenses. And that MLGIP account doesn't have the contributions from the county and the state that will soon appear there. So I think that's a pretty accurate number for what our fund balance actually is. The PNC analysis account, that's going to get spent on operational expenses. Same thing for PNC treasury account. So I'd say that's, that's not a bad idea of what our fund balance is, actually. We don't have a separate account that we call a fund balance. If the board wanted to establish something like that, you'd have to look at that and consider it. Um, but that's roughly what I, I think, since we don't have the large. Bimonthly expenses from county and state in there at this point, that's pretty accurate sense of what our fund balance actually is. And that's about one month's worth of expenses.
Which one?
Four hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred forty four dollars.
All right, okay.
Any other comments or questions about this budget report?
Can we see how much uh we may be earning on that seven hundred thousand or whatever the number is?
In the MLGIP account? Are you saying in the ML, MLGIP account?
Well, well, right now the balance is five hundred sixty eight thousand, eight hundred eighteen. Um. So that's kind of where it is right now. Um.
Is there an interest rate on that?
Uh, the interest is what you want to know? It's in, it's in the budget. It is uh line. Thank you. Page six, the last line, interest on the MLGIP account. We made eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty four dollars. That's basically.
How does that work out as a percentage?
I do that calculation.
I think their statement should show that, shouldn't it, as a person? Okay. Can we get the statements?
So, so the ML, the MLGIP account is interest bearing?
Mm hmm.
Oh, that's a pleasant surprise. I think.
Right. Our, our checking accounts are not interest bearing. So what? Our checking accounts, we don't get interest.
MLGIP is.
So with the.
Again, that's the fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not bad.
It's not bad, you know. That seems to be like in my head, like five percent.
I don't.
Yeah, would say the thing.
Eleven thousand out of five hundred sixty eight. Yeah, you, I think you're absolutely right. Maybe four or something. Yeah, okay, so. All right, so uh moving on then, um. Uh, we gave you printed copies of the fiscal year twenty three audit. From S and B, and you'd already seen that before. This is just kind of their official printed version. The county requests that. And we asked for extra copies for you, and we've got one for the library as well. Um, security update. Uh, we have been talking with the county about moving forward on some of the recommendations you made. We currently have the ability at the desks at Charlotte Hall in Lexington Park to close the doors remotely. Um, we want to have that ability at the Lexington Park Security Desk. We want to add it here. And then we also want panic button. So those are initial things we're talking on. We will have to work with the county on that. We've indicated to them that we are interested in moving forward on those initial first steps.
Has there been any feedback about they're willing to help us with that?
Yes, they are. It's really more a question of how busy um buildings and ground is over at the detention center. There, that's apparently occupying an incredible amount of work. So other things are kind of on the back burner. But yeah, they, they, they were interested in working with us on that, and I think that they will.
On that same topic, about between two and three weeks ago. Uh, there were some library personnel testifying in Judge Cheshire's court on something that happened at one of the branches. Can you bring us up to date on that?
Yes, we had a um member of the public um. Harassing staff. Uh, that member of the public was asked in no uncertain terms to stop. And continued to send harassing emails. So we went to the court to seek out a peace order. And that was granted for six months. It was in person uh by email and by text.
Was it in any way topical to anything we're doing as a library or as a branch, or was it just interpersonal?
It was personal. It, it, it was solely personal things. It was not really about library services.
Um, on the security thing. So does this fall under the burden and the cost is on a county because it's their building, or is it's going to be our expense on the door closing for the panic button? Or do we know yet?
Um, we're, we're hoping that the county will agree to do that because the, there are these buildings, but if necessary, um. We do have some restricted funding in the FOL account that we could put towards this, and I think that the FOL would agree with that as an expense. Um. They have four areas and building enhancements are one of them. So if necessary, we will move forward that way. I'm hoping that the county will do so. Um, but uh. But they then have to, you know, put forward capital funds. They wouldn't be a lot. So we're, we're hopeful that we'll work this out soon.
Michael, I have two questions. Um, one, are there specific next steps that are, that are going to happen from here? And two, can you please make sure to update on this next month as well? I want to make sure that we keep really close tabs on this process.
I, I don't know that we'll have action on it, but I will let you know if there is any action and we'll continue, yes, to work with the county to move forward on that. But I think we've got our guests online now.
Well, before we leave this topic, is there anything we can do as a board to? Add some momentum or accelerate this?
No. Um, I don't think that an approach from the board to uh department buildings and grounds is going to help. And the county commissioners are well aware of the backlog of work that is going on with the detention center. Um, so I don't think that you can accelerate this, and frankly, I think that um additional requests might um. Might be viewed as um. A step too far.
Okay. Well, let's just see what happens, but I do want to make sure that this stays at our attention.
We'll, we'll continue to pay attention to this.
Thank you.
So at, at this point, um, we're going to move on over to a presentation from the county, uh, speaking of the county. About Everside, and it is the possibility of having a health clinic for county uh employees, including school employees. Into which the library has been invited. So I will go, go ahead and move right on over here.
Uh, we have David Yingling, who's a deputy administrator um online right now, and Catherine Prattson will be joining us. She's with the county HR department. And Everside is a clinic, um, kind of like an urgent care clinic that they want to open for all county employees only.
David, welcome. Thank you for joining us today.
Good morning. Thank you for having me today. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, and, and now we can see you clearly over Zoom, so please take it away.
Fantastic. Uh, I, I'm not going to take up uh a whole lot of your time, but I'd like to uh. Uh, offer you uh this uh opportunity. Um, this process, and I've, I've shared a lot of information with uh Michael about some presentations and things that have gone on in front of the commissioners in the last couple of months. And I'm going to give you a little bit of uh timeline. So before me assuming this position, uh county government and public schools had uh embarked on a. Project to figure out how to contain our healthcare costs. And uh they uh worked with uh Bolton, one of our uh analyst companies that does a lot with our healthcare. To identify mechanisms by which we can uh to look at our healthcare data, see why our premiums are going up uh so high. Uh, that's always a fun part of the budget. Right around the end, we find out what our healthcare premiums are going to be, and uh big rises uh create difficulties at the end of the budget. When, right when you're going through the uh finish line. So in January of twenty three, Bolton came down and provided a uh. Overview of a proposal that was being used in several locations and being explored by others. Primarily, it was the Everside Health Clinic and Employee Healthcare Center. And so what an employee healthcare center is, is, is based, in St. Mary's County, we are what we call, what we can, are considered a uh. We have low healthcare capacity uh generally. Uh. Uh, I don't know if any of you have tried to get a doctor's appointment for a physical, get your kid a sports physical, try to uh, your kid wakes up uh in the morning on uh Monday morning with a sore throat. Try to get them into your doctor uh for uh um strep or something like that. But uh.
Heads are nodding over here, David.
I'm sorry?
Heads are nodding over here.
Okay. Uh, so uh, um, they uh, um, so what, what does the employee do? They take time off of work. They go to an urgent care. They get an appointment at an urgent care. Uh, they get prescribed uh medicine. The doctor deals with the. Primary thing that they're dealing with, which is the sore throat, and then uh they move you on to the uh next patient and. The urgent care, or worse, the ER is a very expect, uh expensive prospect for our insurance carrier, which then raises our uh premiums. Uh, with my own children, uh, for example, uh, the, the doctor that uh they saw for their pediatrician has retired. And nobody picked up his uh practice when it was bought out, and so uh I don't even think I could find their medical records uh now if I uh wanted to. And so. Uh, to get my children's sports physicals and things like that, uh, we end up making appointments at an urgent care, because every doctor you call are not taking new patients. And so it's creating a, a bunch of difficulties, but that is not good for our plan. In that uh urgent care costs a lot of money, or they're, they're billing our insurance a lot of money for those basic services that we uh get as a uh healthcare center. So what an employee healthcare center is, it would be open to any employee. Who is on our plan. So it would only be recovered employees who are using the Care First uh Blue Cross Blue Shield. The uh employee could uh, the hours of the uh, and, and so a- as Bolton went through and identified this, the public schools have uh signed on. And there was one that was opening in Kent County. There was one that opened in um uh, that is opening in Washington County. And the employee health center is open to the employees on your healthcare plan. And what those employees can do is uh, they have expanded uh the uh hours, and so. So say Monday morning hours would start at six o'clock in the morning. Uh, there would be some Saturday hours, and so the public schools are very interested in this. And have actually already signed a contract and are moving forward on this because they've identified about one point seven million dollars in grant fund, funding. Through the Merrick, Merrick uh Maryland Board of uh Ed- Education Association, MAE. So uh, they, they have already signed a contract and entered into this agreement. And the nice thing about this program is the more insured and people you bring into this program, the cheaper it is overall for the uh organization. And so they invited St. Mary's County Government, and since your insurance operates under uh the St. Mary's County Government policy, we wanted to uh offer you the same opportunity. And so. The public schools is coming. They're, they are here. They are opening up a healthcare facility right in Leonardtown that will be open fifty hours a week. It will be staffed uh based on the population of all of St. Mary's County Government, all of St. Mary's County Public Schools with a doctor, three uh PAs, uh. Three uh medical assistants and a, and a receptionist. And the goal is that if you need to get a uh, have a primary uh care provider, you don't have one. Uh, you could go there and be seen by the doctor, and instead of being in and out in five minutes, uh, they would schedule about forty five minutes to look at you holistically and your healthcare. And uh take uh good uh care of you. Um, at the end of that appointment, you would not have to pay a co-pay. So the advantage to the employee, instead of spending twenty dollars to go in and uh see a doctor, or your kid wakes up in the morning. And they are sick. Obviously, they wouldn't schedule a whole bunch of appointments uh Monday morning because they're going to expect a bunch of kids coming in. So uh you would be able to go online and schedule an appointment, that emergent ca- appointment for your uh child. Or even in the middle of the night, there'd be a twenty four seven uh telehealth option that would be available to you to find out if you even needed to go there. The far, the uh location would provide you with generic prescriptions, and so that reduces the cost of the plan. So say your child has strep. Uh, they would provide you the generic amoxicillin or whatever it is that uh. Uh, you need uh to treat that, and you would walk out the door with that at no cost to you, and the cost of the plan would be based on the generic formulation instead of. The new whiz bang, new uh uh formulation of the uh um. Plan.
Pharmaceuticals.
Pharmaceuticals. There we go. Uh, so as we move forward with that. Uh. The main thing about the uh healthcare center is that it is an option to you. It's not anything you're required to use. If you have a primary healthcare provider, you like your primary healthcare provider, you want to use your primary healthcare provider. Uh, you can use your primary healthcare provider. If you want to go see a specialist about uh something that's going on with you, you can go see a specialist. It does not change anything in your healthcare plan. It just provides you a primary care physician that can deal with uh the things that come up. Your healthcare appointments, your uh basic uh screenings. They would be able to do the strep cultures. It would be just like going to a doctor's office uh that you're going to now. Except for you wouldn't be twenty, paying twenty dollars for every time that you go. And also included in the service, it, there would be a licensed clinical uh professional counselor there to provide some mental health services uh to our employees. That's another uh area where we are very underserved in our community. And so uh we have uh received uh two presentations on this, one in January, one about a month ago. Where uh the Board of Ed brought it back and said, hey, we've identified uh a lot of grant funding, so we're going to charge ahead. Uh, now, and so I'm a little behind on uh where they are, because me personally, I would ra- I would rather be bringing this forward as a budget. Uh, and not doing it out of our, our FY twenty five budget and not bringing it ahead now. Uh, but uh, we are going to own the, the facility, so um. There's a, a little bit of upfront cost that I have to come up with, none of which will come out of the library. And the cost to the employee is, so for St. Mary's County Government, which you are a part of, uh, is about six hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. In the first year, there's a four-year escalator each year that goes by. Um. It's a three-year minimum contract with two option years, so year four and five are not guaranteed for them if we don't like their uh service as they uh roll it out. And it.
David, you're breaking up a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now? What you's, yes. Can you repeat what you said about, um, I heard it's a six hundred and eighty three thousand for year one. It's a four-year escalator and.
Uh, four, four percent. Uh, e- every year it would escalate at four percent.
Okay.
That is not the library cost. David, we'll break that out for you.
Yes, that, that's not the library cost. The six hundred eighty three thousand dollars is to all of county government. You are about one percent. Based on your insured, you're about one percent of county government. So you would be one percent of uh that. Uh, the county has identified funds for the first uh about eighteen months to cover all the insured out of our uh premium rebates that we have received over the years. And so the upfront costs through the uh early years would not be borne by the uh um. Library, but in the out years, what we are going to do after that eighteen uh months, and what the Board of Ed is going to do. We are going to split it out through the um. Um, healthcare costs. We, we do an eighty five fifteen split, eighty five percent by the employer, employer, fifteen percent by the uh employee. So it works out to between four and five. So it works out to between $4 and $5 per insured per month. The advantage to us is a couple fold. One, we built into the contract a guaranteed return on investment. And so for that $683,000 per year with the 4% escalator, between the public schools and the St. Mary's County Government, we believe on our healthcare costs, we can save around $47 million because you will have a healthier population, not going to the ER, not using the urgent cares. And so each individual point of service that your, your employees go to, if they elect to use this facility, and the advantage to them of that is every time that they go there is they're saving $20. And so me, a family of four, if my wife goes for a physical, I go for a physical, my children both do sports physicals, I've saved $80. So $4, $4 per payer per month, I have made back my $4 that I'm paying out of my paycheck in those four visits that I'm going to do every year anyway.
David, a question, and that is that this is based on the idea that healthcare costs in total will go down over the years. Will that savings be reflected in what the employees are paying as well?
Yes. So the thought process is, is that the, and then the packets that I provided you from the board's presentation, it shows the projected healthcare costs that we will receive, we are expecting to pay over the out years and what the difference in those costs is through the Everside healthcare. And there is a significant savings over the years. And that's where you come out with the $47 million over five years that we anticipate we will save from our Care First premium. You would be 1% of that.
A question, if I may, what do you envision the total using population to be across all the eligible population?
So when I went to Kent County for their newly opened facility, they are having a very robust interest from their employees. We did do a survey of our employees before we went down this path to see, are you having problems getting a doctor? Are you having problems getting into a doctor? Are you having problems going there? And the answers to those questions were resoundingly yes. And so as we built out this proposal with Everside, we took historical data from St. Mary's County Public Schools, St. Mary's County Government, provided that to Everside to look at our real life usage data to build this, to do an actual analysis of can they save us money in that? And resoundingly, the answer to that is, yes, yes, it will save us. That's, that's where the $47 million come from. And we believe that there will be strong interest, as demonstrated by Kent County, their employees are using it at a very high clip. But, and the staffing was built around the thought process that we would have very robust usage. And that's how they're building it out in Washington County, that's how they're building it out in Kent County. So we see a lot of interest from our employees to use this, and they have built out a staff with the anticipation that we would have robust use, so they would be able to handle that usage.
But back to my head, my question, what is the projected headcount? If everybody used it all the way through their families, how many patients would be funneling through this one location?
If everybody used it at one time, which is not their historical rollout that they see, but if all 6,000 St. Mary's County Government employees and family members that are covered under the plan used it, that would be a very tight fit. They would have 6,000 patients.
6,000, thank you.
David, we've had a similar clinic at my employer for probably about a decade or so. And one thing I was interested in is seeing a list of specific services. And also if, and you said that the county would be owning the facility.
So Well, we're, we're, we are hypothetically leasing it.
Okay. Well, my, my question was, if for some reason you wanted to switch to a different provider, would that be a seamless process, you know, just having the new provider move into that, to that space?
That is exactly the reason why we are buying all the equipment, we're buying all the supplies, we're buying all the equipment. That was built in that say, hey, we don't like Everside, you didn't meet our expectations, which we don't anticipate. We don't think you're doing a good job, we want to transition out. We've had conversations with Care First, who is actually watching this particular program very closely because they're looking at a way to maybe do something similar. If in three years, when the contract ended, Care First or some other vendor said, hey, I can do a better job, and somebody convinces us that it is, it would be as simple as taking down the Everside logo, putting up a new vendor number two, and it would still be our healthcare facility, and they would have to transfer your healthcare information to the new vendor. They wouldn't give it to us, but they would give it to the new vendor. That's written into the contract.
All right.
Does anybody know when we go to an urgent care, are they MedStar?
We are. I think one of them is.
Not, not all of them necessarily, no.
One of them is.
Can I ask, maybe this is a dumb question, but what is the kind of specific question or decision before us that we have to make?
Should the library participate in this program? We're being invited to. We think it will save us healthcare costs over time and they'll save for our employees. We also think, as does the county and the schools, that this is going to be very useful for attracting and retaining employees in St. Mary's County, that it will be considered a benefit. So I have later on, under action items, your decision about whether to participate or not.
And do we have firm numbers on what the cost would be?
Um, yes.
Well, David gave us some, we would have to pay, correct me when I'm wrong, David, but we will have to pay for that initial, the initial costs that we, that the county's paying their employees using our health refunds. Those are what they're using. Our refunds have gone back into the health insurance costs, so ours would have to come from the fund balance essentially for the first year. And then after that is when David says that they're going to be built back into the actual employees and employers' cost. So after that, it's not, it's not going to be in addition, but there are administrative fees. I believe that David said that ours will be around $10,000. Is that right, David?
Yes, that, that sounds correct based on the size, size of your group. Now specifically, this has not gone for the commissioners to, and so I'm kind of in a chicken or the egg kind of problem because obviously we are the major insured and, and so you see this go two ways around the country and in different organizations. And so this is not technically part of your Care First premium. And so some organizations would just say, hey, it is incumbent upon us to say, hey, we want to make the plan as reasonable as possible, we're going to implement this, we're going to bake this cost into your Care First premium and not be very transparent with your organization, just saying that we want to make this the best product it can be. The other way to do it is just to say, hey, this is a separate project cost. This is something that your employees need to consider because they're going to be paying for it. I think it should be a separate line item on their paycheck that they know what they're paying for. And so that's the way we are approaching it as a separate and apart from our Care First process. And so the commissioners have not made a final decision. That will happen in December when it will end up in front of them, just a few things needed to be worked out with the contract on our end. You are being invited to be involved in this. I think ultimately it saves you and us money by your participation. And I don't actually need a decision from you today until the commissioners make a decision, understanding that the proposal that Everside has given us is built around the assumption that it is such a good deal for everybody involved that we would, we anticipate that you will want to participate. But if you said absolutely not, I am not participating, we pulled our servant, our, our employees, they do not want to pay $4, $5 per payer per month to have this service, they like paying co-pays, they're afraid it's going to, whatever reason, then I just have to go back to Everside and change the numbers by which the proposal was built on. That's a needle I have to thread on my end. But I would anticipate that your employees will have the same interest as ours because you, your employees have the same needs as us.
Well, not to be crude, but where in all this is your bread buttered? Are you with Everside or are you a contractor trying to?
David is the Assistant County Administrator.
Okay, I'm the Deputy County Administrator for St. Mary's County. I, my bread is buttered by St. Mary's County not pushing up my Care First rates.
All right. And is the school system on board with this?
St. Mary's County Public Schools has already executed the contract. They are currently working on building the facility, which is going to be Dr. Miller's old office. If you look over on Mokley Street, it is the second floor, top left where Dr. Miller's pediatric service is, is where it is. That location was picked because it services about 90% of our employees within 20 miles.
Got it. So there are three groups that still need to join on because the county and the schools are, are on it. And that's us, Metcom, and housing?
Housing. I have had, I went to the Metcom meeting yesterday. Metcom has signaled that they are very interested in it, and they will give us a final decision after the commissioners join. But I anticipate through my conversations with their board yesterday and Mr. Erickson that they are definitely on board. You would be next and housing would be the third, that's correct. I don't, I don't have, I do not have a firm decision from housing yet, but I, again, I anticipate they will participate.
So all count, the county employees are all on Care First as long with the school, and those have all joined Everside. We, us, Metcom, and housing. Well, they're, they're anticipating it, excuse me. So housing, Metcom, and the library are partners with the county. We are not county employees, but we do share their health benefits, and that is why we are being allowed to be included in this.
Yes.
Do we have, do we have a sense of interest from the staff?
That was my question too.
We have not brought this to the staff yet. We just talked with David last week on this, and so we brought it to you to discuss what our options are, and then we can talk about what our next step is.
I mean, if you would like to suggest that we take this to the employees, I will happily do so, but that doesn't have to be, I think, a vote committing us at this point. You could simply say, okay, we're interested, go find out if the employees would like this.
I'm not sure about that. You know, to me, this sounds like a great idea, and I think this could be a really great resource. I think it could help with retention, it could be seen as a benefit. And I think that if we don't do it, we may be perceived at a competitive disadvantage from job seekers in the county, thinking about a county job versus a library job. But it would be nice to have just firmer numbers in terms of what kind of costs we're looking at as we move forward and if we decide whether to commit or not.
I will see. I don't, I don't see where there's a savings to the library. I don't understand that math. There may be a savings to the employee, but I don't see the savings to the library.
The anticipation is that our, our increases on, on premiums will not go up as much each year. And so we pay 85% of that, so that's the cost that we are saving.
And if that cost does not go up, then we will pay less over time. We'll be part of that 40-some million saved over years. So if our rates do not go up from year to year, the library is not paying as much, and that's why we will not.
I understand that. So is that what we normally do, David? We pay for this, for this package, the employer pays 85% and the employee pays 15%?
We pay 85%, period.
On this, on this Everside deal? It would be a separate deduction in their paycheck.
No, it would be part of their premium.
I mean, can they opt, interrupt out of it?
David, can they opt in or out?
So the answer to, the answer to that is all, either all covered employees under the library can use it or not, none of them can. It's not a, it's not something that open enrollment where you'd say, I'm, I'm going to, I want Everside, but I don't. It would, it would, it's, it's based on the entire population. That's how the economies of scale work out.
Our health, our health insurance isn't that way. Is that employees can opt in or opt out of health insurance?
Yes, employees can opt in or opt out. If the employee opts out of the health insurance, they are not paying for this.
Okay, so then it doesn't cover all employees. It only covers employees that are opting into our current health insurance plan. That plan now expands to include Everside.
Yes.
And they pay an extra $4, $5 a month.
Yes.
So, and the cost savings is not guaranteed. There's a huge assumption here that enough employees will participate and do what their doctors say to therefore improve their health. And the health insurance company then someday recognizes that and gives us a lesser increase on our premiums. So that's a lot of assumptions, I'm not saying it's to be due, but that's a lot of assumptions. There's no guarantee of a cost savings to do this to the library.
That's
Not that it's not a good thing for the employees, but I would never say that we're going to save money doing this.
I will see the cost.
David, can you let Linda talk? David, let Linda talk, Ben, David.
I apologize, David. I think the cost savings is actually twofold. It does help and they, there is proof that this has occurred in the, in other places that it reduces that cost increase. So the premiums would, they're still going to increase because health insurance increases every year. It's just, we hope that that increases less than it would have been. In addition, if our, if our employees are able to access health insurance easier in this county, which is difficult, I'm not a part of this, I'm in the military and I still can't get into my military clinics. So it's difficult in this county. So assuming that our employees could access health insurance and help, help easier.
You mean healthcare.
Increase. And also that would possibly give bigger refunds from the health insurance.
But I mean, how do we measure that? How do we know?
We can't.
It's not measurable to, who, who is our healthcare provider?
Care First.
Care First, instead of increasing us 11% next year, they increase as 10%. But they're not telling us that. We don't, we don't know what, how high it could have gone. We only know what they're charging.
That's true. And that, that is one very valid dimension. We just got to think of a full picture. To me, I'm thinking about a benefit and access to a set of medical professionals every other public employee in the county has, except library staff.
Granted. So the other thing I like is, I think John mentioned, I really would like a list of the services. Do they have a sonogram machine? Do they have EEGs? Do they have EKGs? Do they have X-ray machines? What services are we exactly talking about? And I think that's something to present to the employees, certainly if they're going to be involved in this, they should know what they're getting for the extra charge.
And Well, we can ask David for that.
Yes. So two things, yes, the services that are covered, I can provide you a list of all of those and you can present them to the employees, that's easy. They're not specialists, they're not doing physical rehab there, they're not doing, so we have, but you, you can go in there and get your vaccines, you can go in there and get your physical, you can get your DOT physicals if you, if you guys need a DOT license to drive your new mobile library, all of those kinds of things. I can give you a very easy list of what is covered and, and send that to Michael. The other thing I would say regarding the return on investment, the return on investment is guaranteed in the contract. And so the return on investment saying, hey, you're saving X number of dollars. If this employee had gone to an urgent care, if this employee had gone to the ER, if this employee had gone to a non-covered entity and the cost was X and it went up, if they cannot guarantee that return on investment, they, they are paying us for the overage of that. It is a very specific and aggressive contract that the public schools negotiated with them with the help of Bolton, the benefits group. So there, there is some, when So there, there is some, when, when Everside looked at our actual data, the one thing I will say is there is actually absolutely no doubt in their mind that if our employees use this service, that they will save us significant money on our future premiums because they would not have put it in, in black and white. And so I'm fairly confident that we will achieve that. And I believe from a safety standpoint of our premiums, we're not flushing money down the toilet. And so we will be looking at the return on investment and the savings quarterly with Everside because that is how they're, they're required to report it out to us. So it is, I, I do believe it will save us significant money in our premiums.
David, can we back up to the front end of your presentation?
Just in the interest of time, can we make, keep this brief? Have this be our last question?
I got lost. So I'm on Blue Cross Blue Shield through my wife. Can we stay, keep on seeing that doctor and those doctors that we're seeing now? Or do we have to switch?
Nobody has to, this is a tool in the toolbox that your employee may use. Nobody has to switch from any doctor or anything they're currently doing. This is simply an option that your employee can do.
So we're basically, Everside is opening another doctor's office that we could use?
Yes.
Yes, that is exactly it.
All right. Okay, Belinda, can you wrap us up?
We have asset strategy on. So if you have any specific questions for David, if we can wrap those up and then we can have the discussion on, on whether or not to choose later.
Yeah, that, that is on the agenda for later.
I guess I'd say really quickly, when is our decision point? And David, long term, we as a library, not the county, are not happy with Everside. Can we opt out of that, participating in that contract in the future?
Um, that's a really good question and I would have to actually go back to my, my county attorney. I, I think once we lock in, we're locked in for three years, we, we could probably renegotiate it again for the option year four and the option year five would be the answer I would give you off the top of my head. Unless Everside did something that didn't, that breached the contract, at which case there are the, the typical exit clauses as far as, hey, you didn't staff it. You didn't provide a good service, in which case there's always clauses built into the contract to do that.
So David, the commissioners are making their final decision in December, you said. Do you need an answer from us as the library before the commissioners decide?
No, I, I, it, it would help me, but I do not need it. I, my, my thought process is, is I am going to go forward with the assumption that after you guys discuss it, you look at everything, you are going to be interested. If you decline the offer to join, then I, I will thread that needle with Everside because your, your population as far as covered employees is fairly small. And so it, it's not a, a, it wouldn't be like the public schools not joining this. They've already joined it, but let's say they backed out on me. They're two thirds bigger than I am. And so that would drastically change the math and the proposal. So.
David, we may be small, but we are mighty. So.
You, you are absolutely mighty, mighty. I'm looking forward to the mobile library opening coming up here shortly, but.
It'll be great.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm going to proceed with the assumption that you guys are going to want to join on. If, if you don't, you're not going to hurt my feelings. You're not going to lose any friends. But if you chose to join later, it would, it would be a separate negotiation between you and Everside and it would probably be a lot more costly for you. And so that, that, it would, it'd be, it's easier to opt in, try it for three years and then opt out in year four than it would be to not join today would be my, my thought process on that.
Great. Well, David, thank you. We will discuss further later today and we'll circle back.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed the conversation. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Good to talk with you. In that case, we will move over to asset strategy and.
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry. Let's do like a five minute break right now before we jump into asset strategy. Can we get them entertained emotions to do that?
So.
I know. Can you ask them to please sit patiently? Thank you. All in favor of five minute break?
Hi.
Thank you. Back in five.
All right, we are back. Thanks, everybody for your patience. Michael, I think now we can welcome our friends from Asset Strategy.
Welcome, Asset Strategy. Just a word for you. Our trustees had ample opportunity to see the very high level summary that you sent the previous week. But I don't think all of them had an opportunity to go through all of the detailed documents that you provided just this week. Board members, those are in your packet. You'll notice there's quite a bit of information there. So in the next half hour, I'm hoping that we can have a summary of the sort of overall picture and then bits and pieces of some of the larger ones, but we don't have time to go through all of the information that you've been provided for today. Since we have, you know, a couple of other things we've got to get to. So if we could have that high level overview and then any sort of questions that you want to ask to Asset Strategy, we'll field those too. You're muted. You're not muted.
Well, one moment, Alfred, we're having some technical difficulties. We cannot hear you.
Just a second now.
How about that?
There we go.
All right. I found a magic button on my headset, so sorry about that. Well, thank you very much. And John, as you know, is having a heart procedure in a couple of weeks and he's has a visit with his medical team to walk through the valve replacement, so he couldn't join us this morning. And what I'd like to do is we have one action item that if we can address that today would certainly be helpful. That we have been replacing MetWest in all of our client accounts that has that particular bond fund. So we have a search package where we've identified another fund called Dodge and Cox that we've been using to replace Midwest. So if I could reserve five minutes at the end, I can run through that quickly and see if we can come to a consensus.
Sounds good.
Yep. And the first document that was in the material is a market value update we did on Monday, where we could summarize for the trustees the steps that had been taken since the last meeting to proceed with your approved change in investment targets, change in the structure of asset classes. So if you have that available, I'll run through at a high level the changes that are now embedded in the in the portfolio.
Sounds good, Al. Thank you.
So the the first part, there were two asset classes that were approved, but not funded. We had the emerging market and that asset class was eliminated. And the 5% target was moved over to international equity. And the prior target was 15%. You see in the market value update is now 20. The second asset class is high yield, but again, 5% approval, but not funded. And that was eliminated and that 5% moved over to fixed income. And you'll see the fixed income goes from the old target of 26% to 36. So five of that is from the high yield. And the second 5% is from the tips that you see down below. And you see in November, those assets have been sold. And that 60,000 value in September is moved over to the Metropolitan West. So their asset base grew from 364 to 424. And with that, then we have the 36% target all in alignment with our moves on the high yield and the tips. And then we also took the REITs and we eliminated that asset class and we have the Schwab tips that were also sold and moved up to the small, mid, fuller and thaler. In the small cap asset class, REITs are a industry cycle or type that you do find in small cap. So it was a an area that you do get exposure with with fuller and thaler. And this certainly made a bit more efficient, I think, for for oversight. And that 8% target was then used to increase the small cap prior target from 9% to 17. And then the final piece of the reconfiguration was in large cap, where the Schwab US Broad was the solo account you can see in September. And then we added a large cap value Coho and a large cap growth fund Edgewood. And initial rebalancing was a third, a third and a third. So let me stop there. A lot of moving pieces. But all are completed in place. So we get to the next quarterly meeting for the fourth quarter. We'll meet in in February. All that will will be embedded in in that report. If I confuse you, any questions?
So far, so good.
All right. So the the next package was also a follow up from our prior discussions. And the question came up, what could we produce on a quarterly basis that would provide a performance report earlier in the cycle? Our large full blown package takes normally around five weeks for us to have availability on the platform. And that's driven by the various peer universes for all of the investments that aren't available until the end of the the first month. So in this case, the end of October, our system comes live. So we had sent over the what we call an executive summary, which is right out of the full quarterly report, which you'll see in a minute, pages 22 and 23, which are a summary, as you can see, of the total fund, each asset class, and then each retained manager. And what it lacks are any peer universes. So example, for the total fund, we plot performance in our large report against the health and welfare peer universe that is not available, as you can see, we just have the target benchmark, which comes out of the investment policy statement. And then for all the managers, there's no peer universe. So example, in large cap with the Schwab US Broad, we do have the S and P 500 index for benchmarking, but we don't have the large cap core peer universe. So it's a quick summary, but it does provide performance numbers for a portfolio. Again, each major asset style and each manager. And we'll have that two to three weeks from the close of the quarter. So you'll have that much faster than our full blown. Any question on that document? Good. And hopefully that'll provide the data that you're looking for in a more timely fashion at the end of the quarter. So the third document is the full blown quarterly report that does have the the peer universes. And the sake of time, I'm going to just jump into the performance components, skip the market recap. And I'm going to be on page 16. And this is where we look at the annualized performance. And here we have both of our benchmarks, the target benchmark, which comes out of the IPS, which is the most important. Because that measures how
I'm sorry, John, I'm lost now. Where are we?
All right, this is in the third attachment.
Page 16.
Executive summary of total portfolio.
Okay, thank you.
And this is on page 16.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. So we have our target benchmark that tracks how we're doing against our approved asset classes and approved percentages, which is most important. At the very top of this page, you'll see the total fund versus health and welfare peer universe, which is assets less than 50 million. It's the closest fit that we have on this platform to look at your type of portfolio.
I thought we moved to, I thought we moved to health and education as our new comparative body.
Now, it's been a health and welfare. I'll go back and look at, I know John was looking at some other potential benchmarks. So let me report back to you on that. But this is what we were had put in place last quarter. That was again, a closer fit. Less aggressive type of a portfolio, which is much more defensive. But I'll make a note and see if there was another that he was researching.
I think we actually had it nailed down. It was going to be health and welfare.
Again, let me just double check. Is it our system? This is what was approved. This is what the analysts were working with. And the these benchmarks are not as important in monitoring because they vary or can vary substantially to how you're allocated. And that's where the target benchmark is tracking exactly with the asset classes, the percentages in each asset class. So it's very applicable to how is a portfolio doing against what the market is providing. The health and well care, or another way might identify helps provide the the peer universe for plotting purposes. But again, it's not as meaningful as the as the target. So if you look at performance as an example, and just look at the quarter where the market turned negative again after a very strong first quarter, second quarter. But we had very, very strong market numbers, but all the Fed work and when the Fed came out and announced, we're going to keep rates higher for longer, the market really rolled over in the in the third quarter. So you can see the red ink. And the fund was off 3.8, our target benchmark 3.6. So we're off 16 basis points and you can work your way back all the way to the point of inception. Another page that is helpful. We always like to keep an eye on risk. So I'm going to go to page 21. Here we look at three and five year scatter charts, which are plotting the peer group. You can see all the dots. That's the other 42 portfolios in this peer universe. You can see the St. Mary's portfolio is our box and then the the target benchmark, and you can see how closely aligned they are. And they're in that upper right quadrant, so they've taken more volatility. And they've been compensated, as you can see, with a very strong outperformance of 3.1% versus around 1.4 for the median fund. So on a risk adjusted basis, it's you've been rewarded for the level of volatility. We can talk about risk at a later meeting and some of the steps we have taken in the portfolio. We'll do some back testing to see if that's projected to have some value in lowering the risk profile from the old format. So that'll be on the next agenda. Then I mentioned pages 22 and 23 on that executive summary. So here is the same chart where we do have the peer universes. So case in point, you look at the total fund. You can see the health and welfare is incorporated. And for each manager, I'll use large cap as the example. For the Schwab US Broad, we have the passive index, but then we also have the peer universe of the other large cap blend funds that are in the E investment alliance peer universe. And that is what we find in the the full full blown reporting. We are going to talk about MetWest. If you come down to the bottom, you'll see the the underperformance we took in the last last year. And we've also noted a spike in the the volatility, which we found problematic. And I'll point that out in the search package. So you can see some of our rationale. And again, we're replacing MetWest in all of our clients, whether it's operating reserves, endowment foundations, defined contribution. So any question on just the performance profile? If we had more time, we could certainly look at additional pages, but we do want to be respectful of your time and get through the the search on on MetWest. So that is a very last package was a fifth attachment. And we are looking at fixed income. On the first page, you'll see both the incumbent. So MetWest, which is part of the TCW group, a very large financial services organization, then Dodge and Cox. And here is qualitative information on expenses, minimums, investment philosophy, et cetera. Just putting this fund side by side. Another important page that we always look at, which helps us understand what do they do to help drive their performance and risk profile is on page three, where we look at sector allocation and particularly how it differs from the index. So you see to the right, the Bloomberg and it indicates as an example, very heavily into into government treasuries. Where both MetWest and Dodge and Cox, much lower, where they're making bigger bets, whereas where they find better opportunity in investment grade corporates, mortgage backed securities, asset backed securities. That's fairly typical for actively managed bond funds that they don't want to replicate the index, but stay within the major sectors that you find in in bond funds. Page four is looking at annualized performance. So the peer universe, you'll see to the middle left is US core fixed income. And below that is the performance from median to fifth percentile, 95th percentile for that universe of bond funds. You see down below them, we have TCW and Dodge and Cox. And then finally, the passive index, which is a Bloomberg aggregate fixed income. And then we can look at performance for the two funds. You'll see for the 10 year period, Dodge and Cox return of 2.1, the incumbent 1.3. And then the peer universe Dodge and Cox is up in the third. So it's outperformed 97% of the peer universe and the MetWest has been a laggard, as you can see across all time periods. And if then you go from left to right, particularly on Dodge and Cox, you're going to see predominantly top decile, except for the last quarter when they were in the 21st percentile. So a very consistent return stream, which is what we're looking to achieve. Another important chart on searches, when we get into continuity and consistency in return is on page six, where we look at three year rolling periods. And there's 10 on this chart. From the left, that's three years ending on nine, 23. The far right, three years and nine, 14. With the MetWest, they have five time periods are above median and five below. This is the mediocrity that has pushed us to look for a change. Dodge and Cox, you'll note, as you look at the peer rankings, all 10 time periods, they're above median. So we like and look for that type of consistency in performance that we don't go from top decile, then next quarter in the bottom decile, even for annual periods. We like that embedded consistency. And particularly for this type of portfolio, we certainly want to be more defensive in our our positioning. Now, I'm going to look at two more charts. One being the risk statistics. This is on page eight. This is the five year, looking at a full market cycle. And then we can look at the the full 10 year. And let me start with standard deviation, because we talked about volatility and risk. So the Dodge and Cox fund, as you can see, their standard deviation for the five years, 5.6. The index down below, 5.59. And then the median for the peer universe, 5.7. And against the peer universe Dodge and Cox is slightly below the peer universe. So plots in the the 39th percentile. So again, it's slightly less volatile than the the standard deviation for the the average fund. The other risk metric that we are looking at is down market capture. And in this statistic, the primary benchmark is the Bloomberg index down at the very bottom. And you'll see that's a 100. So that's the bogey. And then we can look at Dodge and Cox. And for the five year period, there is an 88. The peer universe up above is 100.7. So that tells us the last five years, if that index went down 10%, the Dodge and Cox only went down 8.8. So it has that better down market protection. And again, in a more reserved type of approach, that is a type of performance metrics that we look for in our our bond products. And then to the left is the up market, which is the the counter component. And same thing, if the market Bloomberg went up 10, you can see the Dodge and Cox is 104. So you get a slight premium in up markets. That all leads to the sharp ratio, which is a risk adjusted, looking at the standard deviation, five year performance and plots in the second percentile outperforming 98 in a risk adjusted basis. So very strong risk return metrics. And then we always like to close just with the graphic, a picture, back to scatter charts on page 12, which incorporates all the return risk data. And you'll see the Dodge and Cox is plotting just to the left of the standard deviation line on the vertical. It's above the horizontal, which is the average return. And you can see the index of Bloomberg is bottom left. The Dodge and Cox plots very nicely in the in the upper left. And then if I go to the 10 year chart on 14, you'll see a slight improvement, little higher plotting on the upper left. The standard deviation moves a little bit away from the standard deviation line. So a bit more efficient for 10 years, which much longer cycle than we had with the the five year. Again, fairly quick assessment.
Can I ask, can, what does the X axis mean on this chart? If we're looking at page 12 or page 14, I understand the percent return on the Y axis, but just with the standard deviation on the X axis, can you, can you unpack that for me, please?
So again, we have the axis is made up of standard deviation. So that is the horizontal or X. And then we have the other axis being the median return for the peer universe. And it divides this chart into two quadrants, upper left, lower volatility, better return, bottom right is higher volatility, lower return. So it divides the universe into the two quadrants. And allows us to look at whether it's five years, 10 years, three years. This risk adjusted profile that we want to make sure we're very clear on what the fund has done, helps set expectations for the future.
Thank you.
So you're asking, you're asking for action on this, then?
If you're comfortable, this can certainly wait till next quarter. But we did want to get it on the table. And again, it's something we've been researching for two quarters and moving away from MetWest and all of our client portfolios for the, I think, the reasons you can see.
So the question is, within our domestic fixed portfolio, if we want to get rid of MetWest and replace it with Dodge and Cox?
And as our recommendation, yes.
Okay. Do we want to discuss that? Do we want to consider a motion to do that? What do y'all think? We need to let this.
Percentage of the portfolio is this, Ben?
Uh, I think it's 33.3%.
I'll tell you, right now, it is, yep. If you look at the market value update, it's 33% of the portfolio with a 36% target. So it's slightly underweight the asset class.
Does that have any high yield embedded in it?
It has a small percentage, around 4%. But they do tend to be more conservative, where they'll be in the double Bs and not down in the in the C categories.
In your experience with that fund, how widely have you seen that 4% shift?
I don't have the exact, the prospectus puts a cap on it. I think it's I remember from our last reading was 8%. But historically, it stayed under five. I can go back and get a firm snapshot for you. We tend to look back over 10 years and quantify that that factor.
So here's where I'm going with that question. We took high yield out as a separate category. Now we haven't embedded in this recommendation and we have no way really of seeing what the number is now before we did.
Well, keep in mind, the high yield was not funded. It was an approved asset class. You know, thus having a small percentage in high yield in Dodge and Cox and then MetWest was consistent with the the past approval of high yield. But in this scenario, it's going to be embedded and we're going to have Dodge and Cox make the decision on whether they'll stay in 4%. Move up a little higher, a little lower, just be more tactical in use of high yield and make decisions that we can't make at a committee level by meeting quarterly. And we can get more details on the long term history on the high yield exposure and you know, that's my comment. If there's things that need to be answered before you can vote, then we should get those questions and
So so let me, let me put a motion on the table to replace the MetWest domestic fixed fund with the Dodge and Cox as proposed here. I will make that motion.
That motion?
Do we discuss? Thoughts? All right, Judith.
Pausing. I guess I would have to divert a little bit. My concern is the performance overall of the investment portfolio. And I'm looking at the Schwab statement. So this is a little bit of a sidebar. And which is the entire, it's the entire investment portfolio, right? The Schwab statement. Page three has a summary.
I don't know that he's got the Schwab statement that was provided for you by your request.
Yeah, I don't have that. Yeah, I could get it, but it's something I have to
Okay, then I'll 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 table that for now.
Okay. Uh, so then all in favor of the motion to replace MetWest with Dodge and Cox, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, John is opposed. Thank you. The motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Al, thank you so, thank you so very much. Yes, please do make that change. If you have the opportunity to speak with John, please give him regards and tell him we wish the very best for his health.
I surely will and he's
And we'll give you more time. We'll give you more time next quarter. And I'm sorry about truncating a bit today, which is a lot to get through. I should, Judith. Go ahead.
Thanks, Al. Please send our best to John.
Wow, we're going to talk to him at three o'clock, actually, and I will pass on your best wishes, which I'm sure he'll appreciate and and we'll talk to everybody again in in February.
Yeah, have a wonderful holiday.
Likewise. Enjoy your Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye now.
And Judith, I should just point out quickly that a lot of the Schwab statement will not reflect changes that were just recently made in the in the portfolio. They're only just making the changes that were requested. So I think upcoming statements will give us a better idea, though of course, all of it will depend upon the market itself.
When, when did the changes, when were they?
Those, those were only just recently made in sort of happening coming into this meeting, really.
It's, it's not recent since the year, our year to date. Our year to date on this fund shows a growth of 1.4%, which I think is very poor.
Well, yeah, that's why we just made a significant change a month or two ago, right? We were, we were considering that for like six months between March and September. Well, yeah, that's why we just made a significant change a month or two ago, right? We were, we were considering that for like six months between March and September.
Yeah.
So.
We're not going to see that difference right away.
I I just still have concern about working with asset strategy, but that's a different topic. So and I think we need to, we're still tackling that issue. It's a bigger issue.
Yes, and and I think, you know, we're giving them the tools that they're asking for, and let's see if they deliver.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Judith. I appreciate your eye on this.
I can very quickly go through a couple of other items here. First, mobile library update, we've got three things for you. January ninth is now set for a ribbon cutting. Um, and the reason why is on January second, the commissioners, we did not think we'd be meeting and the libraries closed. I'm sorry, go ahead. Ninth, I'm sorry, January ninth. On the second, we did not think that the commissioners would be meeting in case the library is not open that day. And the tenth is when the session in Annapolis begins, so we're hoping to get some of our delegation there for the ribbon cutting. So that is the reason for the ninth, and we're fairly certain that we're at long last going to have it in county with wrap on. Um, before the holidays. So the second is that we went to look at the mobile library and I've sent you photographs and we said. Wow, that's really big. You may not be aware that our posts out front for the hitching, the the Amish buggies have been knocked down twice by cars. People are not particularly careful there. We were planning on putting the mobile library on that curve out there and we looked at it and we said, ooh. We're really concerned the mobile library is going to get hit. So we went all around the parking lot. Where can it go? Where can it go? We what we've settled on because there's only one space where that level of power required by the mobile library can be. We're going to, we we've talked to the county, they're going to knock that curve out there out. And expand an area for the mobile library specifically to be to make it safer. Um, the final thing is that you were concerned, you know, who's checking on this? Do we have checklist? Yes, we have a vendor, Michael Stendowski, who helped us since the beginning of this project, who. Is worked with other libraries in Maryland, including Calvert on theirs, and he has a substantial checklist and he's reviewing that with tech ops. So we are pretty confident the vehicle when to be delivered will be completely according to specifications and working. Questions?
Do you know what time of day the ribbon cutting will be?
It's typically going to be after the county commissioners meet. So I was kind of hoping, although I don't think it will happen, that we could do our biannual update. Early in that session and then also have them come to do the ribbon cutting, but. We're probably looking at about noon or one o'clock.
Thank you.
Anything here for the library or over at?
It's going to be here. Um, was our idea, although it's a mobile library.
No, I just think for pictures.
Yeah, no, we we were planning to having it here, yeah. Um, and we think that they'll agree to that.
Michael, do you want to tell them about the other plans with the mobile library celebration?
Um, well, yes, we are also planning on taking the mobile library to our other locations. Um, Charlotte Hall, Lexington Park, uh, having celebrations there, um, opening up for people to come visit. So yes, we are, go ahead.
Um, so we were thinking the weekend of February tenth and eleventh, we would have a big celebration. Um, because the ribbon cutting is during the week, a lot of people won't be able to attend, so. Um, and this would be where we have like the big party.
Yeah, so we are, we are definitely going to be rolling this out in a major way. And. Um, I can hardly wait to see it. So there's that. Staff day is December first. Uh, at nine AM to one PM. And that's going to be here, or is it Lexington Park, Lexington Park? Okay, Lexington Park, because it's got the larger meeting room. In the past, you have been invited to come to staff day as trustees and you are welcome to attend that meeting if you would like to.
What happens?
Well, um, we do some updates on. Uh, sort of just what's happening in the library. And it's really more morale building activities, so we have just sort of fun things that we do. And it's really just an opportunity for you to kind of meet the staff and learn a little bit more about them.
Amy Ford is planning this year. Do you want to give them a little?
Yeah, so our our theme this year is shoot for the stars. We are going to have Ashley Biggs from the library for the blind and physically disabled. She's going to speak about accessibility, um, as that is one of the initiatives that we are working on for staff. Staff will have the opportunity to see our virtual reality equipment, um, try out our robot cars that we take to outreach and use at children's events. They will have the opportunity to to create some art, um, experience the therapy dogs from. Oh, my gosh, what's the pets or it's Pets on Wheels, um, who also come and provide services as listening dogs for kids who are learning to read. So there's just a lot of fun activities as well as, you know, learning about services from the state.
Two questions, please. Um, you noted already that you went out with the RFP for the strategic plan.
Sorry, John, can we stay on, can we stay on the library staff day before we move on?
Sorry, I thought we were done there.
No, yeah, I I'm going to try to swing by around like ten fifteen. I have a meeting I have to get to first, but that sounds great. Thank you.
And it would help if we could know if you want to come, so because we plan for food and things like that.
Anybody else?
Well, I I I don't have to come the whole time. I'd be there for maybe a couple hours.
Yeah, you're welcome to join us. Yeah, yeah. Drop in if if we're just having one of the team building activities, you can join in that.
All right. Trustees against staff, right?
No, yeah.
A very healthy dynamic. Yeah.
It will be a Nintendo game that you can play against the staff.
Having played it myself, I wouldn't bet on on you. Uh, John, you had questions?
Uh, yes, the RFP, you got a good response.
Yes.
And you filtered it on down.
Yes.
Tell us why you chose who you chose and have we executed the contract yet?
Yes, we have, and the process is underway. In fact, they have already requested four major packets of information, which we are providing. And they were chosen because. And and Sharon, who's not here today, was involved with that process because they have the most experience working with libraries. All the costs came in roughly the same. So we had two finalists, both of which had extensive experience working with public libraries. And they simply had the most, and we looked at strategic plans that had been based upon their their processes. And the proposed schedule they had, they simply had the most expertise of the people who replied. Quite a number had never worked with public libraries before, and frankly, we just didn't think that they were going to understand us and our process quite as well.
Um, with regard to the contract and not to go down the mobile library rabbit hole, but can we take a look at that? I'm sorry, it's already been signed, but I I think the board ought to see what's in it.
You can see it. I am empowered to sign contracts for the for the library. But, uh, yeah, sure, I I we will show you the contract that's it's already been signed and and it's not paid completely upfront. Half is paid upfront and the remaining half is based upon successful conclusion of the plan.
Is that going to be grant funded?
The vast majority of it is grant funded. We've got a twenty thousand dollar grant, the total is twenty five thousand, the rest is Friends of the Library funding.
And is the grant a sure thing?
Oh, yes, it's a grant money is already there now. It's held by the state. So what happens is, and we've already applied for half of it. We apply for the money, having spent it and we get reimbursed.
Okay. My other question has to do, and we kind of skipped over it, Roman nine. Subsection A. Uh, little Roman two, printed copies of the FY twenty three audit. Has that been reviewed for accuracy?
It's the same thing you've already seen. It's just a formal printing of it.
Yeah, but has anybody looked?
You have, you have, you've you've already approved this.
I think John is saying compare the printed document to the version that we approved previously. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that what we got, which I considered to be the final, just not all dressed up. Uh, I saw some inconsistencies there. Has this gone forward already?
Yes, you you approved that audit. And we sent those, that approval back to them. So the audit's already been finalized. You approved it. As is.
There was one change. I didn't, I didn't look for it. On reporting to the commissioners.
I don't remember.
I I haven't looked for it to see if it's in there or not. But I will.
Why don't we move?
So I think as a placeholder for next year, when we get this thing, we ought to go over it with a fine tooth comb. Because there are same things in there. Uh, that really are not correct or they're contradictory.
Well, I think the time to do that is before we approved it.
We didn't, we didn't have time. I think we got it a day before the meeting. So I would suggest that we get the draft that comes into the director, even though I realize you and Blender are still working on it. But I think the changes that you're working on are probably not material to what we're looking for, and you could certainly communicate if you found errors. But we got the day before the meeting. So but we could see the draft when it comes in.
That's actually when we got it, we sent it directly to you. We get a first one that that we are literally going through. And they are relevant to you because they.
Yeah, they're the figures, they're the numbers. Yeah, so we checked those. So we then sent those corrections back and you got the audit the same time that we did.
We're looking at more content and language. But, yeah, well, somehow we need more than a day to review this audit and that maybe that's an issue stress with F and B. We have to have more than a day.
Yes, so, um, we will run into this every year because the county wants it from us. In October, they don't finish it till the end of September and you guys have to approve it at the October meeting, so that only gives some, you know, two weeks and a half for them to. Solidify and get it to us. So I I mean, we we are doing our best, um, but that is, that is the timeline we have.
So then maybe we could push our October meeting into the third week or whatever, so that we can build in some extra time between when the audit is received and when we gather to discuss and approve. If that would be beneficial to.
Yeah, I mean, the only legal requirement I'm aware of is November first to the states because it's part of our annual report. I don't know any legal requirement for the county, but there is a, there is a requirement to get to the state November first.
Um, that that is from the state library. Yes, they want the audit by November first. But the county, the county also wants to have their work done before November. So I don't know if there's a legal requirement, but it's a fiscal request from the county that we'd like to respect. Now, in the past, unlike this year, we have sometimes been a month late and there's no penalty for that. So if. Let's just say for next year, if, um, there is a. Concern about the time, then we'll just tell the county and and the state who says, oh, it's not like they they even care to. Punish us for that. Um, we we can tell them we're going to be late because of later arrival of the of the document itself.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, John. It's much more important to have it accurate than to this external deadline that's. Probably nobody in Baltimore and Annapolis is going to notice if it comes in.
Well, they notice, but there's no penalty. Yeah, 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 sure, yeah.
Correct.
The next line item on our discussion is the meeting dates for twenty twenty four, so you guys can discuss whether or not to move the October meeting.
I I think rather than do that now, let's just see what the process is, but it will be early. So if. Uh, we we really can't guarantee having even a draft of the audit early. Or mid September, it would be nice, but there's a lot of work that goes into it. So. If those dates approach and it looks like an issue, I suggest changing it then rather than now.
Doesn't, doesn't the contract stipulate when the draft is due? Yeah, so what is that date?
Yeah, yeah, September thirtieth.
September thirtieth, and they actually still request some things for in September, so I I don't foresee them completing it by mid September. Generally, it is the last day of September.
This is especially the case because we.
Get it earlier, we get it early October, best case, we get it early October.
Yes.
Well, I mean, actually talking about the dates, I was going to suggest two changes on our meeting dates.
Okay, Michael, can you lead this walk through the dates?
Um, yeah, sure. If we provide this document to you about your meeting schedule. By meeting Fridays, you have a lot less disruption than meeting Mondays just because of the holidays. Those are the dates that you're scheduled to have your board meetings for twenty twenty four and the location where you'll have your board meetings. Um, I should note that on your agenda, it says that it's at Leonard Town next month. In fact, it has to be at Lexington Park. Um, because the Friends of the Library need the room to set up for their December sale. So we're going to move it to Lexington Park for next month. And otherwise, you see. Next year, and these are just the standard meeting days, there's no kind of no special changes there.
Judith, you said you had a couple.
So my two thoughts were the October and November dates are Friday before a long weekend. And I would prefer to not tie us down to Friday for a long weekend, days that we often travel on. Could we move it to October eighteenth and November fifteenth?
That's very much up to you.
Is is Veterans Day the weekend of the eighth?
Yes, so Monday is the holiday.
I see.
And the. Other one is the, I think Columbus Day weekend.
I mean, that that sounds reasonable to me to move the October and November dates back a week.
Ten eighteen and eleven fifteen.
Yes.
Ten eighteen and eleven fifteen.
Um, I don't think you need a motion or or anything like that. We'll just say that's where they'll be. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Let's. I think that's all the informational items. So on Everside, just to take care of that possibly quickly. Um, do you wish me to bring this to our employees to judge interest and you would have time to vote next time? Or would you like to take action today?
In some, in some ways, it seems like the question is whether we want to close the door on this or just leave the door open. As the process continues rolling, right? I mean, David said he's assuming that we're on board. Do folks have have thoughts about how to kind of shape this conversation or what sort of the actionable item is at this point? If there is one, hold on, Dorothy, Dorothy?
So we could make our decision, or you could make your decision next month. And still be in time to be ahead of the commissioners on it. And if that's what you would like, uh, that's fine. Um, I'm only one employee who would be involved with this, but I tell you, I consider this a substantial benefit that I would. Take advantage of, that it will save me money just paying out a twenty dollar co-pay every now and then. I've been somehow blessed with that remarkable health. I was never in there, but. Uh, just getting vaccinations, very convenient to where I work. And any other employees who are part of this who would like to weigh in? I I I think you're looking at unanimous, yes, it's from the employees who are here. There's about twenty twenty five employees who are benefited this way who choose this.
I mean, we all agree it would be very helpful, very beneficial, and makes us a more attractive employer. Where does the money come from? Just the fund balance?
It will come from the health refund mostly. We may not get enough some years. Um, but we hope that this would actually increase our health refund. So then the cost of the administrative fees may go straight from there, which is going into the health.
This year, this year would come from the refund.
Every year.
Every year, every year, there would still be refunds.
Line item, because it's an expense for us.
It, so.
It's it will be part of, it will be part of the healthcare expense, like existing budget line item. It's it will be part of, it will be part of the healthcare expense like existing budget line item.
Right, so the refund will be less.
No, the refund we're expecting to be more.
The the refund itself from the count, from Care First, we hope would increase because of this. We would take that money and put it into the administrative fees of the Everside. Rather than into what we've been doing, which is the cost of health insurance. Um, but we have never anticipated that health refund. So that's why sometimes we actually end up with a a profit at the end of the year because we've put money back into that.
Right.
We're not directly involved in the negotiations um, between the county and Care First. Uh, that that's all on their end as far as.
Yes.
That is correct, Jess.
And and the county does set our premiums too. So that eighty-five percent, fifteen percent is set by the county, not us. We pay eighty-five percent, county pays eighty-five percent of employee premiums. Um, so all of those, because we we are part of their plan. If we were to go out on our own, it would be substantially more expensive and probably not even something that we could provide to ourselves. Because we do not have enough staff to really have a robust.
We.
And their health plan is excellent. Our staff love it.
And and some years before Belinda became our our CFO, um, to to give you what I think is your your deserved title. Uh, I did investigate that and there was nobody who would pick us up with the number of employees that we had.
Yeah, I think this is just a great addition for the for the staff to get as part of their healthcare because healthcare is so difficult to get down here. Um, getting a doctor appointment is nearly impossible six months out.
Well, it's a legitimate argument as to whether or not healthcare in the United States should be based on your employment status, but um, we're just not gonna go there right now.
No, no, I'm just saying this is a great, I think Everside is.
Oh, no, I agree.
It's a, it's a great thing to have.
Um, so where where we are, it seems to be is we will bring back a recommendation to you based upon staff next time.
Is that where we are?
Or are you just gonna say go?
Like to see, it's up to you. You to share with them the list that David said he can provide about exactly what services are gonna be in this clinic. Um, it's one thing to say, but I'd like to see it itemized. What what's gonna be in the clinic? I I mean, I know I could go to urgent care and get blood tests and antibiotics and stitches and a whole less services. So what, I'm just wondering what's the difference between urgent care and this clinic?
We have to pay a twenty dollar co-pay.
You do, you do, but you're, but if you only go non or once a year, it doesn't cost you anything, right?
Well.
It also takes four hours.
Yeah, so we we will, we will be presenting that to the employees once David provides it to us.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
Does this, does this mean that we're?
Yeah, yeah, we would know. Once David provides this to us, we will provide this to the employees. My sense uh, is that this is basically like one of the clinics in town. And so you should be able to get any kind of prescription there. In fact, we know they'll have a pharmacy, so that's certainly gonna be the case. And where some of the savings will come in will be that it will be for generics and not necessarily the high-cost prescription named drugs. But um, again, this will be voluntary, but we'll, it it, do you, do you wish to say, all right, um, bring this back to us next month?
I I'm not sure yet. I will say right now, based on this information and the fact that we are not leading this, other people are doing it, right? If the commissioners put the kibosh on it, it's not, it's a non-starter for us. With the information we have at hand, thinking about the value of this service, thinking about what it would mean for retention and morale potentially, and the competitive disadvantage we would be at. I would feel comfortable today saying the library is in if the commissioners decide to move forward with this, because I think just given our size relative to them. I I don't, this is kind of our only opportunity to join something like this. This is a three-year project. If it doesn't work, we just don't re-up in three years, right?
And you're assuming the cost is around ten thousand? Year, right?
Kind of, yeah.
That was always credit. I mean, I mean, I would agree.
I am putting some trust.
You know.
Well, I'm putting, I'm putting some trust in the county schools negotiated contract and I'm putting trust in what the commissioners are doing on behalf of the government, which is a much larger entity.
I just think it would be foolish if we didn't jump on board. We're losing an op, we're losing an opportunity that I think is a great opportunity.
I mean, but everything has a cost.
Everything has a cost.
Be aware of that.
Of course it does.
Something, so we're, we would actually sign a contract, not now.
We.
I think we would sign an MOU.
It would sign an MOU more than like the, yeah, say.
I would assume so.
Uh, we, they're, they're going to be able to give us what they think our costs are going to be based upon the figures that they have. I don't know that it it's gonna tell you, here's your cost three years from now exactly. Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's reasonable. And I guess if we saw something we didn't like, we don't sign the MOU. It was really outrageously not what we expected.
Yeah.
But it's a little hard when we don't, we don't have any numbers.
The the part that confuses me is it it I boil this down to these people simply opening another doctor's office. Okay? Does this mean the county's going to leave Blue Cross Blue Shield in favor of this?
No, people cannot get doctor appointments. There is, this is a medical healthcare desert. People are waiting hours at the urgent care, pediatricians up and leave, nobody's taking new patients. So if we can siphon some of this need into this new facility, that's gonna help everybody in the county get access to healthcare.
For county, covered by the county now, not just any Joe Blow off the street.
Did David say whether um, the providers would be um, physicians assistants or would that actually be uh, MDs involved?
One doctor.
Some doctors, some PAs.
Okay.
Three PAs.
All right.
There was some category after the PA.
Three MAs, medical assistants and one social worker.
Social worker.
Mental health.
Receptionist, okay, mental health person.
Which is also a desert here in this county.
Yeah. So one thing we didn't ask was hours. Like, are they gonna be open in the evenings?
Yes, he did say that. They will be open in the evenings.
He said.
Twenty-four seven?
He said fifty a week.
Yeah, he's, well, he's fifty hours a week, yeah.
But I mean, that's a point of eating. And it's one because it gets sick.
During our presentation, they also said that they would be offering uh, telehealth um, options as well, so you don't even have to go there, so.
Uh, Care First doesn't already offer telehealth?
They do.
Okay, another option.
Just another option.
I would simply remind everybody that this, if we, if we go through with this, it's gonna put a squeeze on where we get funds for the OPEB account, which is a fiduciary tax hanging over all our heads.
True, um, because what you should be putting into OPEB is based on whether or not we have funds for the year. There's you should not say, well, we got this healthcare refund that goes into OPEB. Did we have a fund balance for the year? That's where we're going with that.
We had a fund balance at the end of the year, but we.
No, we did not. By the time you threw in the restricted funds, we did not have a fund balance at the end of last fiscal year.
Is the health refund a separate line on the budget?
No, because we never know if we're going to get it or not. There's years we sometimes have to pay.
Mm-hmm.
But there's been more instances over the last several years, the last seven years when we got something. And the amount varies, so we simply don't know. But we're anticipating based on the averages over the last seven years. And I'm only counting the time I've been here, that there will be enough of a refund to cover this cost. Administrative cost. And then you'll have to look and see for the year as a whole, did we have a fund balance or not as to what you'll put into the OPEB.
Okay.
And just to reminder, technically, that health refund is not what's gone into OPEB. That health refund has gone back into the health.
And that is also what the county does with their health refund is they use it to defray future costs for health benefits.
But that, like putting it into the OPEB is is a switch, yes or no? Yeah.
But it's not connected to the OPEB at all.
Doesn't matter. It's money that came back that we weren't expected. And it could be.
You, you still have to look if you're going to say, did we have a balance or not? That gets factored into the total budget.
All right, so in terms of the issue on the table now with Everside, um, does anyone feel compelled to make a call for action now? Or would folks prefer to wait until next month's meeting, when hopefully we could get a better sense of staff opinion about this? And perhaps get more specific information from David than anybody else. Anybody wanna make a motion now?
I move we defer subject to re- uh, receipt from the Assistant County Commissioner about the specifics that were presented during his presentation.
Okay, well, Tressa, you said you would make a motion now.
Would make a motion to move forward now.
Do you wanna, can you spell that out for us? What's the motion?
I make the motion that we indicate to the county that we are interested in joining them in uh, or in an MOU with Everside.
You want a second?
Oh, wait a minute, you've got two motions on the floor. You gotta dispose of one or the other.
Oh, I didn't know you were making a motion. I thought you were just saying that.
He made a motion first.
I did not hear you say the words. I I thought you were just making a statement. Okay, so let's rewind back to John. What is the motion?
The motion is to defer pending receipt of the specifics that we gave to our presenter. For example, what services, what equipment, et cetera, et cetera. There were some others, but he he had a short list of questions about what we're going to see when we go to the clinic.
Okay.
Wait, a second, a second.
Okay, all right, Judith, second to that motion. Any discussion?
Can we bring it up at the, can it be brought up at the staff day?
If if you, if you defer this, we will ask staff. Actually, we'll ask staff either way.
We're gonna ask staff by their way. Um, I don't think it's something for staff day. I think not all employees, unfortunately, and I wish we could have everybody covered by insurance, but the county has restrictions on the number of hours that you can work and still be and we cannot afford to have everybody in any case. So I don't wanna take you to staff day where all staff or they're going to hear about a benefit that I only wish they could have. What we'll do is we're going to approach the employees who do have insurance and say, we can either present to you via Zoom or we can provide you with written information. We wanna tell you more about this and we'll get some sense of whether or not they wish to participate or not. I frankly think that when we look at the fact that this kind of program has lowered health costs in the past, that it's gonna more than make up for their four dollars a month. And that the option of having something without having to do the co-pays on something, you know, fairly typical. I I am, I'm anticipating people are going to support this, but if, you know, I will happily bring that to you.
I thought it was not part of the motion. Well.
Well, they're gonna do it anyway, so I don't think it needs to be.
So the motion right now is to defer this decision to December to get answers from David about the services that are gonna be offered and
and other things that we throw back at him. I think that was the big one.
Okay, all right, and Judith seconded it. Um, in terms of the discussion before we vote, I have to say I'm with Tressa. I would vote to just do this now, so I'm not gonna vote in favor of this motion, but I respect it. Just put my cards on the table.
That's what the vote's for.
There we go. All right, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any?
You only have three.
I'm sorry, who voted? We, I saw John, I saw Judith. Judith's voted for waiting.
That's three.
You only have three.
Okay, um, does it, with the remaining three votes, does it matter if they are oppositions or abstentions?
Yes.
All right.
I mean, the motion's not going to pass in any case. You don't have four.
Okay.
So I I don't suppose it really matters. No, the 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 motion does not pass.
All right, well, the second, so any people opposing or abstaining? All right, John, you know where.
Oppose.
Oppose, okay. All right, so that motion doesn't carry. So then I guess let's move on to Tressa's motion.
That a moot point.
What, how so?
Is it, is it gonna go the same way?
It might. I don't know. Well, let's just carry it through.
Okay.
All right, Tressa, you made a motion to. All right, anybody want to second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed or abstained?
Opposed.
All right. Dorothy?
Yes, please, please go ahead.
But we're just making, it's, the motion is just that we're expressing our interest to the county that we we would be interested in joining them. It's not signing anything. Um, it's not discounting the employees, um, in my, from what David said, it's just us telling him that we are interested in joining them. If they all balk.
Are the majority. Well, that's a good question, though. What percentage of employees would tip this in favor of going ahead? Is it a vote?
John, you're seeing almost half the people who are voting in this room saying yes. This is gonna, the the employees are gonna accept this.
You know, if I was a.
Well, it's a bunch of us in this room that we don't have the results. I'm just asking you if the, if the response is not overwhelming.
The response is fifty percent against, then we won't move forward, but I'm going to guarantee you that it will be they.
Yeah, that's our decision to hear about, but but Dorothy's right. If you move forward without communicating with employees first, you're discounting their opinion no matter what it is.
Well, I mean, I I I think.
Your idea point is right, because you're not listening to what they're saying before you're making a decision.
I mean, I think we're listening to the library leadership in the room.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, but you wanna say, yeah, we're not, we're not listening to employees because we haven't asked them, so.
So you could amend your motion to say, move forward pending approval by fifty percent of the employees.
I think we should just move forward in saying that we're interested.
Those are going to be signing an MOU until later.
Just expressing our interest in being a part of this project.
I think all of, all of these motions have failed.
Yes.
I think that we just need, I think John's motion kind of won by default, last man standing.
Actually, I think we need. Vote of Dorothy for Tressa's.
We don't have a vote for the, for Tressa's motion.
Declined or agreed to or abstained from Tressa's?
We did vote.
Yeah. That's four then.
Yeah, we're not signing anything.
Yeah, all right, I will indicate to the county then, based on the four votes that um, that the library um, is interested. And I will nevertheless uh, bring you back um, reports from staff at your next meeting.
Okay. So the motion that passed in this very odd fashion with four votes is that we are going to continue moving forward with this, expressing interest. And then we'll also hear from the staff next month and we'll see what happens with the commissioners. Okay. All right, I appreciate everyone's ability to express different viewpoints and to disagree in a civil manner. That's great.
Well, um, we do have a slight issue. Um, and that issue would be that it is eleven fifty-one. Um, my understanding, John, is that you have a twelve thirty appointment?
No, I've been informed by my daughter that there's some child ballet activity going on here at twelve.
Well, um, you have a twelve thirty appointment that you cannot miss. Um.
Come in late.
Yeah, um, no, no, I I I'm concerned that we don't have time to go through the manual.
We only have the room till twelve fifteen. I believe there may be something booked after this.
Yeah, so.
Ballerina wannabes.
Yeah, well, um, I, it it's a library program, whatever it is, that is an important thing. So I don't know that we've got time to get through um, this manual. So where my suggestion is, is that we have provided you with a new draft. Oh, we haven't, never mind. We're going to provide you with a new draft. Um, that has. that has the vast majority of changes that you've suggested integrated into it. And there are changes that we think are problematic, and we're going to give you a list of, a list of those.
I actually, I, I don't know, and you guys can decide this. Maybe we could get through the ones that we are proposing the changes that are agreements.
Well, I, we can give that a shot, and that's why we have prepared this separate report with those changes in it. It's because we think that you'll say, yep, that's what I wanted. So we can start with that. But then for.
We would basically today be looking at and basically trying to approve the easy, low-hanging fruit changes.
Yes.
Let's give it a shot.
Okay, so we did want to do this in three parts. So this is the first part. These are the ones that we got recommendations back from Judith, from Michael, and from John. We will address every single one of these, maybe not in this first section. These are the ones that we either agree or agree partially with and have like a counter agreement to it that we want to go through. And then in this way, if we don't get to the second portion, I know when Judith said that she had a few more that she could send us. We do want to research them if you have more, because we have diligently researched this manual.
Yeah, can we, can we please just be extremely careful and meticulous about keeping track of versions of this document? Out now is gonna look different than the one that we approved, perhaps, and we're just.
This is, this is the one that you have seen and made comments on.
This is, no, this is the.
No, this is the one that they have seen and they've made comments on, and you've responded to their comments. Yes, it is. Yes, yeah.
So can I just preface this by saying that I have this personnel manual I worked on in 2018? And the majority of the manual, so that was the last time it was reviewed in 2018. The majority of this manual did not change from 2018 to this version. So and that was, you know, based on versions. There's a history with this manual. So a lot of what Judith pointed out in her changes were actually, they've been in the manual and been approved by boards previously. So you have an eagle eye, I will say that. But a lot of this has been in place for many years and we took a year to review this manual. And there were a team of us, Amy Dickinson, who we have back here, and Belinda and I reviewed this every week for about three hours a week. So this was an intense review. A lot of what we did was rearrange things, but we also looked at the law, you know, made sure that it reflected what our actual practices were. So I just want you all to know that we really took our time in this, and a lot of what you found were, you know, little errors in the, in the grand scheme of things. So.
Also, we want to point out that we're all members of the Society for Human Resource Management, so we do have some background in this. And we did research and look up all the laws. We also communicated with 14 Maryland libraries using their manuals and their policies and discussions with them on our listserv, as well as our monthly regional human resources meetings, discussing all of the changes that we did make. Some we are just acts, regulations and laws. So we will talk about some of them. And this one, probably a lot of those will be in the next section, but we do want to go ahead and start because we know we're on a timeline. So the first one is just to let you know that the page numbers on the index will be updated after the fact, because with changes that you guys made, and also we can't update it, we need Sarah to do it because she set that as a special editing process. Judith requested that we change the Board of Library Trustees to be labeled across the the manual, so we did do that update.
Could, could you wait, please? I'm sorry. I think it's going to be more helpful if instead we look at this document so that you can see the document itself. I know that's gonna take more time. But I think that they, before they can approve it, are gonna have to see in writing what it says. Yeah, that's everywhere. Okay, these are everywhere, everywhere changes. Okay, fine.
Again, Judith requested acronyms. We changed as many as we could find. If you find more, please let us know. We will make those changes. So the first big one, well, the first one from John Walters, page seven, it was simply adding a comma. Section 1.3, section 1.3, line six, I think. You'll see it's in red. It's hard to see because it's just a comma. Everybody agree to that?
No, look on page six, please. There's another change already. You've asked us throughout to the first time that we named something. So St. Mary's County Library, it's the library. That's, an acronym is actually, that's not actually an acronym. So, yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, so that's. You'll notice that pages are all watermark as draft now. It is to be approved on the first page. I want to look at this document.
It said you're gonna see the changes for the library, the acronym, those will show up on multiple pages. We're hitting the specifics that were requested by lined items. So, and again, we're just doing this section. We know we're gonna have to come back next month, so if you see other changes or adjustments, please send us those.
I'm sorry, can you look over my shoulder here? Perhaps I can hold eyes. If I, if you can explain where I see it once, I'll be able to recognize it when I don't see it again. Right there, there it is. Okay, thank you.
All right, again, page seven, section 1.4. So this request was made by John Walters and Michael Dunn to change management to trustees. We actually do somewhat agree with that. I think the policies are first done by management or the director and then approved by the Board of Trustees. So we would actually like both of those to be in there. And that is for both page seven, 1.4, and page seven, section 1.4, again, paragraph three. So it's in there twice. Comes from 1.4, well, it's, they're both 1.4.
It's the red marks. All changes are in red.
So do you agree or not agree with that change? Well, if you say it's a sole discretion of management, and then you say and the board, that's contradictory. So you have to take up the word sole. I think they might say, you know, reviewed, reviewed by management and then approved by the board. Maybe something like that, but no, it's not sole and absolute because it's not management. It's.
How about we just take out sole?
I would get rid of sole and absolute. I mean, we don't really need adjectives, right?
The discretion of management, yeah.
Discretion, discretion carries.
Approval.
Absolutely done.
So we're taking out sole and absolute.
I think it's fine.
We'll work on that. Okay. Is that agreed?
I think. Page eight, section 1.5, line two, again, it's the Oscar comma. Which I don't use, so you won't see it. So John wanted them all added in. We added them in. Okay.
John, I'm sure.
Again, all right, so page nine, the 10, section 1.7, this was requested by Judith. You said the first two paragraphs are incorrect and do not reference board governance or authority. Authority of the board is established in sections 23, 404, 405 and 406, and you asked that we delete those first two paragraphs and begin with the third paragraph. We sort of agree. But what we agreed with is the fact that we, these, each of these sections within this section are kind of labeled. The first one says St. Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. If we take that out and say like St. Mary's County Library is that first governance section. We actually do like that information about the General Assembly in there because it dictates what and why a library is important. This is for our staff. They must read it as employees, so we want them to hear that. And then we move. I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I don't, that's a governance statement. It's a finding by the legislature. It's their position on libraries. It's not a governance statement.
I, we, we put it within the entire section of what the governance of the laws are, is how we aren't just stating it. It's, again, it's not specifically.
I mean, we take out the word trustee, so.
And then we added it on the next line.
Over on page 10.
Again, it doesn't, it doesn't really give you any authority either.
No, it's not authority. It's what we want our staff to know.
But you use the governance and authority of the libraries contained here, and it doesn't give you any authority in that statement.
All right, well, if you would like to suggest more.
I appreciate the importance of the statement. That's the position of the legislature of Maryland libraries is important. I appreciate that.
So.
Introducing it as something that's not.
So. So you could, if you look at that first part before that statement, if you moved that below, then we would still have the statement and then begin actually defining governance and authority. Is that agreeable?
Or what if you delete the words governance and authority and just say the significance of the library is set forth?
Well, the actual law states that it's called the findings and policy of state, so we could just make it say that.
All right.
Just a little odd, the position of the state of Maryland is.
In any case, we'll have to move governance and authority till after that statement, correct? If we want to keep the statement.
That's okay.
I, I think, I feel like Judith is getting hung up on the governance and authority phrase. That's why I suggested just put the words significance or importance in there.
No, he's talking about the title after 1.7, the word governance. Yes, we do have to take out that word.
No, because later we're going to be talking about that. So we still need the statement of governance and authority to be in this document. It should come after that statement about what the General Assembly finds.
We could just come back to this one and with a suggestion, how about that?
We will take that and run with it. So the next part of that section that Judith was, was asking about the annotated code and saying that they were incorrect. They actually aren't. I do have them. We did make sure that we made it, made the references more correct in here, but as defined in section 23, 403 of the annotated code, they are governed by a seven-member Board of Library Trustees. We have all of that. This is only, this portion that you said doesn't, has all three sections is actually only discussed in 23, 403. And there is a mismatched brackets in there. You mean about the number of trustees and how long they serve? Yep. Okay.
So those, those code numbers are correct now.
Everything, we're always correct, but everything in that, that particular paragraph is 23, 4. Great, but I don't know what I sent you, but I think it's the the next paragraph, officers, meetings, attendance, powers and duties are.
And we're adding, we're adding those codes there. We're adding the codes there, yeah.
That in the next section. So that particular paragraph is right. It is 23, 403. We did make that bracket change, okay? Then the next one, you, you said the powers and duties citation. Right. You are right in some degree. There are two sections of the powers of duty. If you wanted to count officers, meetings and attendance, but the section that we were referring to is actually called the powers and offices of the duties. But we did change that to officers, meetings, attendance and powers and duties of the board, and then we referenced both of those sections. But you need 406.
You need 406.
That being the case, and I understand where you're going with that. How about we add respectively?
Respectively where?
Where you got officers, meetings and attendance, and you've attached that to one citation. 23, 404, got it?
Okay, 406 is library personnel. Yes. The Board of Trustees shall.
But we addressed that.
Trustees may. The Board of Trustees shall. It specifically delineates our authority in governance in dealing with personnel. So this is powers and duties.
We also address the personnel in different sections.
And so St. Mary's County Director, if you look in the document, this 406 there.
Contained in.
It's fine, we can add.
406?
It says right here that we have to do that. So it's 406.
So we'll add 406 there.
Right.
Thank you.
We're gonna do.
Okay. So.
So do we need to sort of stop and summarize our motion and try to approve these easy ones? Because I know not even everything we walked through, we're able to resolve today.
I think we should vote on these. Let's, let's make suggestions to us after Judith, the ones that she does want to change. I do want to address the last one because both Judith and John did it, and then because if we, if we don't agree on this one, I want to change that to us again. So this is section, page 10, section 1.7, paragraph three. It said that each trustee is appointed from a list supplied by the incumbent board, and both of you didn't like that writing in different ways. But our suggestion was to come back with a list of nominees to the board is supplied by the incumbent board to the St. Mary's County Commissioners for Appointment. That is the true law or.
That's our MOU.
Is that you do send the list to the commissioners. They appoint from that list, but they don't, they don't choose the appointments. Okay, that's under the MOU, but we're citing the law here, and the law does not say that. And, and an MOU can be broken or discontinued at any time, so I hesitate to cite an MOU in here when the law should perceive that.
It's not actually a citation of the law, though. It's just an explanation for our. The library.
And maybe we add according to the library's MOU with the county, comma. Fill in the blank.
And, and the, yeah, I think, I think if you put the MOU, yeah, the MOU allows the board to.
And then we just stick with the MOU language, and we can't fuss with it, mess with it. That's just the MOU language.
The only thing the MOU does is they cannot counterpropose a name.
No, the MOU allows us to supply the names and not them to just choose who they want.
We, the MOU says, and I drafted this, that we have to, in agreement with the county and the county attorney at the time, we have to provide three names for every opening. And they may not propose alternative names. We may provide more, but we have to provide at least three names, and then they select from the names we provide.
Okay, so we'll reach back and go back through these. And something I want you guys to just remember when you're doing this is this is a personnel manual. It's what we want our staff to know. It's not your board manual. It's not your rules and regulations. It's what we want our staff to, on this level, understand about the library and what they can and can't do, and what the library can and can't do, can't do for them. So just keep that in mind when, when we're going through this. It is for their, the personnel. You guys have your own, but, and I'm not saying that this is not things that we've agreed to change, but remember that they're reading it as a, as a new library employee and just wanting to understand the.
Of course, but it's also every policy.
Yeah.
And, you know, and it's a 70-page document that, you know, you're throwing raw meat into the shark tank when you give us a 70-page document.
We didn't recreate it.
Except, but it was rewritten, right? Like substantively.
We didn't, we didn't rewrite everything.
But I thought that's why we did not have a track changes version, because the changes were so substantial.
No, you, it would look like a Confederate battle map if you had a track change version. It would be hard to decipher where things had moved, and they really aren't that important, the fact that they were moved so much as they were trying to improve the overall flow of it.
I know, but just knowing how meticulous and thoughtful and careful our group is.
Everything read.
You're right. Yeah, that's true.
I mean, just, we did, we didn't rewrite the internal manual, and most of what we did was clarify language.
And to a certain extent, I don't think that's important. You say it's like throwing meat into a shark tank. Fine, we're throwing meat into the shark tank. Michael, I want this board to look at this document, and I thank you all for your careful eyes and say, yep, I approve that. Think of it as something. Think of it as something that is, although most of it wasn't changed, is new and you have oversight on. So it's going to take some time.
Yeah.
But we are open to the changes and I, you know, really think that you've done an excellent job looking at it. So let's go ahead and, and work on a version that you think is going to be with us, the best one. We're going to get to some changes we don't think suggested we don't agree with, but we'll talk about those next month.
So what we'd really like is for you guys, but if you have this one, take it home, send us any changes or adjustments that you want off base on this particular sheet that we just gave you and the new manual. Look through it. We'll start again. We will, please send it in advance. We are researching and looking at every single item. We do appreciate your feedback because as Marianne said, this is often just something that in the past has just been minor changes each time it's been reviewed. So some of these edits and typos or the codes that were missing were just things that were carried forward for a long time. Um, so we appreciate being able to see that. It's not something that we catch because we're looking at all the other things that are dealing with human resources. Um, so we are not opposed to those and, and we didn't, we appreciate that. Um, we did meticulously research all of the, the ones you did have bring forward, and we do have reasons for accepting and not accepting. Um, and again,
We're, let's, let's, let's get to that next month. So, yeah, yeah. We're not gonna, we're not gonna go where, where we, we, we have issues yet. Let's go ahead and finish the low hanging fruit here, although I, as you review it, you may not think it's quite so low hanging. But uh we are responding to every change you have suggested.
And please, um, if you have more suggestions, send them well in advance so we have time to bring it forward again.
Thank you. Y'all have done amazing work on this. Um, all right, our time is drawing nigh very rapidly. Two things looking ahead to our next meeting, we're going to have office officer elections for twenty twenty four in our December meeting. Uh, we do those in the open meeting to vote for our president, vice president, treasurer for next year. And then in addition, I circulated a draft version of the performance evaluation for Michael's annual performance review. Um, I welcome like feedback and thoughts on how, if that form is the way we want to do it, if there are other ways that incorporate the goals that we established for Michael at the beginning of this year, as well as essential job functions. My thought was that we could all sort of prepare some individual comments and remarks and then synthesize them, circulate that sort of synthesized version to make sure we're on the same page, and then we're finished.
My
Update. The document itself?
Yeah.
Like Monday or so.
My, my request to you is if you were going to use that document for my assessment that I know. And you, I, you, you, you set a series of goals that you voted on, and I've now provided you with a report on all of those. But if, in addition, I am going to be evaluated using that form, I would like to have an opportunity to uh address that form as well.
I, I kind of, well, I chime in because we had a list that I believe Director Peter, we had back in April, very specific, eight or ten things.
Yeah.
Very short one for each. I have it somewhere.
Yep, yep, yep.
And then we have this document, but these are two very different things. Um, are we evaluating both things or?
That document is the one that we used last year as well. And so it was drawn on the essential functions plus the yearly goals.
Yeah, so Judith, you, you have seen that short one page list. Those were specific goals that were voted on in April, and I have provided I, I apologize, fairly extensive commentary on all of them. Um, but if in addition you wish to evaluate me in other things, I would like to at least see that form by which you are going to evaluate me and have an opportunity to address those issues.
Sure.
Um, in part, that's to help you. I mean, you say, is he fulfilling these basic functions? You, you could perhaps based on simply the meetings with me and emails you get, say yes, no, maybe. But I would also like to know, here's what I'm being evaluated on and have an opportunity to see that.
That is fair. That is fair. Um, I think given the time, we can continue this conversation over email, I guess, if that's where we are. Do folks have thoughts or anything they want to throw on the table now in terms of that evaluation form that we can address in the next couple of minutes?
We, we are doing the one through five instead of one through three.
Yeah, we'll move to a one through five scale.
Okay, what's better, five or one?
It's on the, it's on the document.
Don't want to get it wrong.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think you're right.
Could, could, could we at least be clear about that before you?
So three would not be five.
Oh, hold on. There's a new version, Judith. I don't know what I, maybe I sent you the wrong one.
Oh.
I'll resend because I sent a new version on Monday. All right, let's adjourn.
I have one thing.
Please.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around all the numbers. Could I have the uh P and C statements, please?
P and C statements. Yes, you, 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 you're asking for our bank statements. Okay, we, yeah, sure. Um, you can have those anytime. What I will ask is that we do not make those public documents. No, they are not public documents. Our bank statements are not public documents, and I argue should not be for purposes of security. One of the first things that you're asked when you call a P and C, hey, I want to talk about my account. They say, give me a specific date, an amount, and the vendor for a transaction. If somebody knows that, they've got an easier chance of hacking us. So our bank statements should not be public, but I will happily provide them to you.
Also, John, I would like to say, um, again, happy to provide them to the board off of board docs. Um, the bank statements starting or ending balance is on the budget every month at the, on that last page, and every payment out of the bank statement is on the monthly expense ledger. I I have to reconcile that bank statement every month to that.
That's fine.
So you, you do have the information, but if you want to see the statement, we have no problem with that. It's just that it cannot, cannot be presented to the board on board docs. So send me an individual email as opposed to, hey, let's make this a board thing, and that's, okay.
All right, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. Before I do, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I'm thankful, Tressa, John, Dorit. Judith. Ann.
And thank you all for all you give to the library. Um, and for your close attention to documents that require very close attention upon reading. Um, and I wish you all to a happy Thanksgiving, and we look forward to meeting again in December.
Bye. Thanks, everybody.